I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grandquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Dahlkeider?
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
I look for motion to approve the second agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
I look for motion to approve the fourth agenda.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
That moves us to item twenty-nine on the council agenda, public hearings and related action. We'll open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statutes, section eighteen dash twenty-seven fifteen. And to open this discussion, Andy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real brief report on this, this is required semi-annually, so you'll, you've seen these reports several times in the past as part of our voter-approved economic development plan we have. So we did meet with the Citizen Advisory Review Committee. We reviewed a number of things to do with the fund, you know, the fund balance, but in particular, we reviewed some of the projects that we have going on that have utilized that fund. So I'll just, I'll run through a few of them here and provide an update. We did provide an update on Peterson Ag Systems, that was one of the projects that received funding from our program. That loan was closed out during the period with ninety-nine percent of that loan, sixty thousand dollar loan forgiven with the one percent paid back to the fund. And they, all those requirements were met, and job retention requirements were also met. A new one for this meeting was the ContiTech application. That's a project that the city council has seen on a number of agendas, has already approved the use of LBA forty funds as part of that expansion. In addition, they have received funding from the State Side Building Development Fund, and several other grants that we've got, particularly Community Development Block grant that they've applied for as well. So the amount of money that they did apply for the city's program is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to go towards that project, so which will also be forgivable once we can verify, obviously, all those, the job creation retention requirements have been met. One thing I will note, the ED did waive the requirement that ContiTech provide collateral or corporate guarantee, so I think we have reported on that. We also did tell the advisory committee that we did that as well. So they did provide three years of on-odd debalage sheets and income statements as part of their, their application. And with that, we did provide the, the review committee with an update on just some different infrastructure projects we have going on and, and other updates that, for economic development in the community. So we have really met the requirements of that, and this is just part of the routine process the council has at this public hearing, that we've verified everything that, that we need to as part of the voter-approved plan.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Final processing, questions for Andy on that? No questions? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment can do so. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to close the hearing and move to item number thirty on the agenda. Open this public hearing at the request of Eldorado Hills Community Association to consider zoning change from R1, Single Family Residential District, to OD Office District, on property generally located a third mile east of the intersection of West Benjamin Avenue and North Thirty-seventh Street. And to open the hearing, Val, would you give us a little background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This project is part of the golf course, that there's a strip that is just west to the Brogan-Calmwater piece of property that was zone changed probably here about a year ago to OD. And they would like to piece off this section of the golf course that has trees, and so the plat will be seen by the planning commission tomorrow, particularly if you guys go ahead with the zone change to OD tonight, and then those two pieces would be put together in one project under one zoning. And I believe the applicants are here too, to explain what their intention is by acquiring this piece of property in the zone change.
Okay, thanks, Val.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's wet out. Not a big problem. Just to give you a little background, we were here about a year ago, or thereabouts a year ago. This is, what a lot of people remember was the house where Mr. Dietz owned, was subsequently purchased and was a rental house by Jake Kenobi and his wife in an LLC. And so Calmwater and our law firm came together and have purchased that property. We were previously in front of you on a zoning change and things of that nature going from R1, excuse me, at that, the lot we bought was ag, and it was rechanged or changed to that of Office District or OD. This hundred feet lies immediately just to the west of that lot which we purchased. The zoning on this lot is R1. Again, we just wanted to meld into the existing lot that we purchased for the development for a professional office building, and so we're requesting a zoning change from that of R1 to that of OD or Office District. And just so you know, why is there a hundred feet being purchased? I would tell you this much, it's been, I've worked with the Eldorado Hills Community Association, as you know, that nonprofit corporation now owns Eldorado Hills. So with that being said, that's who the purchase is from for this hundred feet, and that's why we're here to get the zoning change. If you look at it, if you're up there on Benjamin Avenue, if you were looking to the north of what was formerly where the Dietz property is, which has now been removed, I would tell you that you would look to the west for that hundred feet, and what it is, is kind of what you would probably see as a tree line. And so what we're going to do is we're going to purchase that hundred feet, and so we'll secure the landscaping and the needs of that hundred feet, and that hundred feet roughly ends where the golf course picks back up again on number five green. So basically, we're purchasing up to where they maintain at this time. Historically, since inception, Eldorado Hills has used that kind of as a waste site for things. So with us purchasing in the land and also going to be put up in a building, we would like to have maybe a little bit more aesthetic control to the west. So that's what we have. I'd entertain any questions.
So you could plan for some landscaping back then?
Yeah, we want to, yeah, absolutely. It's our desire to have it all consistent, art that, excuse me, this additional hundred feet plus our lot. You know, we're working very diligently to have something in place, you know, there's going to be parking, there's also retention basin that has to be up there on the east side of the property, things of that nature. So I live in that backyard, I want it as green as possible.
You're going to remove the trees, then?
Good question. No, the big trees, the large trees to the west, no, we'd like to keep them. One for aesthetics, and number two, if you, if you played that golf course before, it's a par-three, and...
That's my question.
Yeah, that tee box up there, we want to keep those big trees.
I don't want to be responsible for damage in your buildings.
Exactly. No, that is a concern. I would tell you, there are some cedars, some small shrub-type trees, cedars trees, we're going to clean that up as part of the landscape, landscaping, but the big trees, absolutely do not want to remove those. Yeah.
Councilman Faust, just aim farther right.
I've tried that, and it don't work.
But feel free to hit a lawyer's window.
Oh, boy. That's not a good...
Offishen injuries.
That was my concern.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Appreciate your time this evening, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Nothing further, planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on June fifth, 2018, at the request of Eldorado Hills Community Association for zoning change from R1, Single Family Residential, to OD Office District on property generally located one-third mile east of the intersection of West Benjamin and North Thirty-seventh, and the planning commission recommends approval on an eight-to-zero vote.
With that, I will close the hearing, move to item number thirty-one. Looking for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five-fifty approving a zoning change from R1 to OD on property generally located a third mile east of the intersection of West Benjamin Avenue and North Thirty-seventh Street.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five-fifty?
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Val, anything else to add on this? All right, any further discussion, questions, comments, council? Okay, if not, short title, please, Val.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five-fifty on second, third?
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty carries on second and third.
Item number thirty-two, I will open this public hearing at the request of New Core Corporation to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to R3 Multiple Family Residential District on property generally located a quarter mile north of the intersection of Chestnut Street and East Omaha Avenue. And to kick off the discussion, Val, please.
Let me, quick, Val? Due to my employment with New Core, I'm abstaining from thirty-two, thirty-three, and my employment actually on the land that this is in question, so...
Counselor? Val?
Okay. This property is just east of Chestnut Street. Six months to a year ago, I believe, we zone changed the west side of Chestnut Street to R2. This would be going from I-1 to R3 because they are looking at multifamily in this, so they would need to have that R3 designation for multifamily, and the comp plan does call for multifamily in this area.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comments can do so at this time?
I'm Cliff Messner with Messner Development Company out of Central City. We have the option to buy this property from New Core, and while it says it's in the name of Messer Development Company, it'll actually eventually be in the name of the group that owns the property on the other side of Chestnut, which is Messer Development Company, Neighbor Works Northeast, and Progressive Builders out of Wayne. The reason we decided we wanted to look at this was, there were a number of reasons. One, we were already putting in Chestnut Street with the other property, and we were putting in a lot of single-family housing there and have an industrial street across on the other side, so that didn't make a lot of sense, so without, well, let's see about buying that and protecting our residential area so that we didn't have industrial across the street, we had another residential area across the street. As we worked through it with, with things and with New Core, it became obvious that one of the things we really need in Norfolk is some apartments. There's kind of a desperate need for it, and frankly, that needs growing as interest rates are going up for people trying to buy homes. So we decided to take a look at that. I think the big issue that we were concerned about in the area was traffic, whether or not that was an issue. Steve Ramis suggested we do a traffic study, and we had one ordered and received. It didn't show any major alarming problems. It did ask that there be a separate turn lane on Chestnut to turn east onto two-seventy-five, and there is room in on Chestnut to do that, so that would be integrated into the area. We also moved all the apartments that we would build all the way to the south to encourage traffic out to two-seventy-five and not out, not into the neighborhoods. There will initially be two apartments that are built, it's actually laid out for five, we'll do two initially. We aren't sure exactly who the owners of those apartments will be. We will be investors in them. Toby Hearn will be an investor, and I think Neighbor Works will be an investor in them, and Carrie Reed out of Lincoln will be an investor in them, but there may be other investors as well. One of the things I wanted to make clear, because it showed up briefly in the newspaper, online, New Core is not an investor in that. New Core's been extremely helpful with us moving this thing along, but they are not investing in the, in the housing. And finally, there's a portion of this property that's going to be set aside for city park, so we need to get together with the city and sort out how that's done. But the area along the, the hike bike trail there is a natural location for a park, we just need to make sure we have access and whatever parking the city wants along there. So those were the issues, there weren't any questions raised at the planning and zoning, so I won't take any more time, but I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Cliff, any question? Think you're off the hook. We certainly do see a need for additional apartment housing in the community, so I think you're right on in seeking to meet, meet that need.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman. Roger Nadirfal, Neighbor Works Northeast, Nebraska, as Cliff went through the details of the reason we've asked New Core to come forward and request his zoning changes, you know, to continue to expand our entire development there with Norfolk subdivision, and definitely want to see there to be housing and then the potential for city park, city green space there, that's the development that we already have plotted. So to protect our investment, we definitely want to see and want to develop that other side of Chestnut for, for housing opportunities. And as you well know, Neighbor Works Northeast, Nebraska typically is a single-family developer, so this will be our first time developing and working with some partners on multifamily, so have great partners to, to work with, and so we're looking forward to that venture, so just want to ask for your support to approve that zoning change.
Thank you, Roger.
Roger, your plans change it all for the way that you're going to exit on Pazwalk?
No, that, it's plotted that...
Is that still planned, same plan?
So it'll be south onto Omaha Avenue, two-seventy-five, and then also Bluff and Pazwalk.
That you're going to go up around?
Right, we'll have that.
Okay.
That arch there, yes. And that's already been plotted, and that part of it, yes.
Let's see, that was already been plotted, and actually with the proposed layout, the way this is, it, it puts the density more down to the south than, and as was noted earlier in the testimony, the providing for a left-hand turn lane is also going to encourage that traffic from that area to go down to Omaha Avenue, which in my opinion would have happened that way anyway, so...
And so we were concerned with the, the comments that were received when we were doing the, the original plating with the, the traffic flow, so that's why we did invest the dollars to go with the traffic study, so really were no surprises when the results of that traffic study, so... Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Roger. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so? If none, planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on June fifth, 2018, at the request of New Core Corporation to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to R3 Multiple Family Residential on property generally located one-quarter mile north of the intersection of Chestnut Street and East Omaha Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval of the request on an eight-to-zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number thirty-three. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-one approving a zoning change from I-1 to R3 on property generally located a quarter mile north of the intersection of Chestnut Street and East Omaha Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance fifty-five-fifty-one on first reading.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, counsel? If not, short title, please, Val.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, council member Grandquist abstaining, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-one carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five-fifty-one on second and third reading as there's been no opposition or anything voiced to this, and I'll move the project forward.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, council member Grandquist abstaining, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-one carries on second and third.
Okay, then move this to our regular agenda, item number thirty-four. I'd look for motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-five-forty-eight annexing attractive land generally located along South Victory Road and Highway thirty-five in the southwest quarter of section twenty-five, town two, twenty-four north, range one west of the sixth PM, Madison County, Nebraska. Ordinance number fifty-five-forty-eight passed on first reading at the May twenty-first council meeting, and on second reading at the June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, two council meeting.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of this on what the third reading, I believe, so...
Motion second for consideration on third reading, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-forty-eight carries on third reading.
Item thirty-five, for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-two creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-forty-nine, writing for construction of a sanitary sewer main with necessary apparatuses for the area known as Legacy Bend First Edition.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-two, second.
Okay, motion second. Steve, if you would kick off discussion on this, please.
Mayor, council before you is an ordinance that would create sanitary sewer extension district for the purposes providing city sewer service to a development, Noren's Legacy Bend, east of Victory Road. Olson's and Associates is the engineer of record for that project and would be providing plans and specifications for construction of that sewer, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have related to that.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions for Stephen?
Anticipate this may occur this construction season yet?
I would anticipate grading will start this construction season, water sewer would probably be right at, I'd say October, November, before we would see any of that start. So sort of this construction season.
Further questions, comments, council?
Well, it's glad to see it, it's the kickoff of what we were looking at, we knew was going to come to fruition. This is the first step, and it'd be wonderful.
Other infrastructure investment to help facilitate new housing development in the community, always a positive thing, so... Any other comments or discussion, counsel? Short title, please, Val.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-forty-nine in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-two carries on first reading.
Your Honor, seeing as there's been no opposition reported to this, and it's moving forward with what we've been looking for, I would move that...
You asked us if we had any opposition.
Okay. I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-two on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-two carries on second and third.
Okay, move this to item number thirty-six, would look for motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-three creating water extension district number one-twenty, Legacy Bend First Edition, providing for construction of a water main with necessary apparatuses for the area known as Legacy Bend First Edition.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-three?
Second.
Okay, motion in second, again, Steve, you would...
Sure, Mr. Mayor and council members, this would be the water extension district for the Legacy Bend project, and Olson and Associates is the engineer of record, and we would be providing the design and construction administration for this. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, infrastructure investment to help facilitate this project. Any discussion, counsel? We'll have you come forward, please, yeah.
Evening. Yep.
Um, my name's Marty Fugger, and then Len Huntley's Bluff Avenue, and my only question was, my friends there were not sure which, which project you were talking about, and I believe you're talking about the project off of Twenty-Fifth and Omaha Avenue? Nope? The, the sanitation district, and, no, which one is it?
Steve, can you provide some clarity on the location?
Sure, this would be, this would be the project just south of East Knowles area, Wyndham Hills area. It's, it's, it's not, yeah, Metal Ridge, I'm sorry, kind of south of the Metal Ridge area. It's east, west side of Victory Road, but north, I think, of where you are on Bluff.
Oh, okay, so it's going to be just north of the roundabout?
This project is north of the roundabout, correct?
On the west, I'm sorry, who was, sorry, okay. And what we were wanting to ask about was the, and I'm, I don't even know if you guys hear comments on annexations. I missed the first two readings, so, but it's already past the third, and I wasn't sure if this was the time or the place to even ask questions about that.
You're close, it's the next agenda item.
The next agenda item.
Item number thirty-seven, yeah, one early.
This is part of the city.
Okay, any, item thirty-six, any further discussion? Okay, item ninety, short title, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district number one-twenty in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-three carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'm opposed, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-three on second and third seems to fit hand in glove with the ordinance written for it.
It'd be a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules, yes.
Motion to suspend the rule, motion in second to suspend the rules, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five-fifty-three carries on second and third.
Okay, now, item thirty-seven, look for motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-four annexing attractive land generally located at the southwest quadrant of Highway two-seventy-five and Twenty-Fifth Street.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-five-fifty-four.
Second that, Your Honor.
Motion in second, and Steve, if you would give us a little background on this ordinance, please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we've, and council members, we've received a request... Mr. Mayor, we've, and council members, we've received a request. Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, are we on 37?
Yeah.
We've received a request from Pat Hughes and Midwest Bank for the annexation of a parcel of ground that would be west of 25th Street, west of the Walmart area. This is for the purposes of a bank in that facility as well as future development within that area as well. There are three separate, within the agenda pack, there are three separate exhibits that express the entirety of the annexation. Exhibit A would be the north parcel. Exhibit B, A, I guess it's still A, Exhibit A, page two of three, would be the center portion or southern tract of the annexation request. And then there's a portion of what would be the city street that does extend out into another parcel of ground, and so we're, they're requesting the annexation of that portion of the street as well. So are there any questions related to that? Be happy to answer those.
So, Steve, the property just to the east, the property of question is within the city limits, right? So this property applies to property that is currently within the municipal city. And can you tell us how, how much property we're talking about here, acres? Do you have that?
We're talking about thirteen, about thirteen point two acres.
It sounds like for, from what you're saying, intended use, commercial development, which is in line with the property abiding.
The intended use at this time, yes, yes. The intended use would be in compliance with our, with our comprehensive plan. Again, the project at hand right now is for purposes of a, of a bank expansion and then future plans to do additional professional type space in that area.
Are there any questions or comments or discussion on this?
Your Honor, and when I look at this, I, I see it's just kind of a continuation of, you know, we've got Highway 275 right alongside there, the Walmart development and that to the south and east of it. It's a natural continuation, annexation process of, of the city's growth that way, so. See, see no real problem with it.
Thank you, Counsel. If there is any public comment, if you need, yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure you have the opportunity if you need it.
Okay, this, when I was hearing this, I thought that's what you're talking about. This is not the, oh, I'm, I'm all for this one because it's on the other side of town. I oppose the annexation that you guys just.
Oh, I, I.
And when you want to get into that.
Yeah, and just process wise, for everybody's information, that item number 34 being on third reading tonight was not allowed, third reading by our code does not allow for discussion.
Only on the first two?
Just on the first two.
Great, that's what I get for not being a civic-minded individual. But, so, what's next with that then? Or you don't even want to take any questions on it?
Well, we can't, what we can do is continue this discussion after the council meeting because we have a coffee with the council forum set up anyway. So if you'll stick around with us, we can't really go back to the agenda and talk about this. So we will, we will be here to discuss following.
All right. Okay. Very much.
Thank you. All right, any, any other discussion or questions, comments, counsel on this? If, if none, short title please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city a tract of land located in part of the northeast quarter of Section 29 Township 24 North, Range 1, west of the 6PM Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5554 carries on first reading only.
Okay, and to conclude, we open up for any public comment period, if there's any this evening. And seeing none, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council.